Good evening, I'd like to welcome this meeting of East Norton Township Ford Supervisors to order. Um, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole, liberty and justice. With you, both parties.
And Grand Chief Lieutenant Ed Brown, your more sessions.
Cindy King, Director of Finance.
Jeff Wurtherman, Assistant Manager, Fire Department Township Consultant.
Sean Colken, Township Supervisor.
Kathleen Debbie Township Supervisor.
Samuel Coleman, Township Supervisor.
Joe Devine, Supervisor.
Patricia Mark, Supervisor.
Hannah Lawley, Bureau of Chair. Um, I'd like to announce we had an executive session immediately receiving um this public meeting for professional education, personnel, and other business related to litigation and um, sorry, real estate. Thank you. Citizens to be, oh, and now approved the meetings, uh, minutes of the regular meeting that took place September 30th, 2025, assuming that we had an opportunity to review those. Any questions? And we'll talk to you for that.
I'll make a way to include the meetings of the minutes of the very minute.
Thanks, Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Coleman, all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Now, citizens here. Okay. Um, if none at this time, there'll be another opportunity later to review. Thank you. Um, any comments from my folks who wrote it?
Yes, I want to say thank you to our outstanding police department, fire department, everyone who participated in our trunk or treat last week, uh, last Thursday. I mean, that's Friday. It was cold, but it was fun. Everyone came out and had a great times and especially to our outstanding township personnel facility department, uh, everyone that participated. So, thank you very much. I believe we had a wonderful time and I think we're good now until the tree lining ceremony in December, so, thank you all.
Yes. A lot, I think we gave out over 1,200 pieces of candy.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm definitely a lot of people just. Do you think it was the biggest one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think yes.
Uh, after that, what Supervisor Coleman said, uh, thank you to the groups he mentioned. He left out one important group that I think was, you know, sort of ran the whole thing, the Parks and Recreation Department, they've done a great job and appreciate their efforts. And uh, for the record, of all those thousands of pieces of candy, I had two.
Um, let's start with old business.
Old business, award bid for decommissioned police vehicle. I would like to call upon Police Chief Matthew Braden to review this item.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Coleman. If you guys, if the board recalls last month, uh, the board approved the sale of a 2015 Ford Explorer that had 131,970 miles on it. The vehicle was posted on munisip bid between October 9th of 2025 to October 23rd of 2025. The highest bidder is a Joe Di Assenzo out of King of Prussia. The high bid was $2,050. Uh, the police department is requesting that the board approve the award bid to Joe Di Assenzo.
Any questions? All right. Are you not willing to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make that form of motion. Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Devin and Coleman. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, new business. East Norton Township preliminary 2026 budget presentation. Our Director of Finance, for her first time doing it with us, Cindy King.
Thank you. Um, so tonight's the first step in the budget process for the 2026 budget. The goal will be to review this initial presentation and approve the preliminary budget summary for advertising. Uh, section 3, 202 of the second class township code requires the budget to be advertised the minimum of 20 days before final adoption, which must occur before December 31st. So, we are well ahead of the curve. Um, what will be presented tonight is a budget summary. We have met once with each department head and the version of the budget summary that you will see includes a full 2026 wish list from each department head. So, it may look a little frightening, but we will work on that. Um, over the next month, we'll be a second time with the department heads as well as individually with the supervisors to review details and get a better sense of projects specific and where the priorities are. And as a part of the process, we'll review which projects and initiatives are feasible to accomplish during 2026 calendar year that meet the goals of the board. As a result of these discussions, adjustments may be made to the budget with a focus on achieving the goals of the board while maintaining a high level of service to the citizens of East Norton Township. Um, a second, more detailed presentation will be made at the November, uh, 25th meeting. Minimal adjustments can be made after the November input from the Board of Supervisors and then the budget will be ready for adoption at the December 16th board meeting. So, it's my understanding that the goals of the board for the past several years are as follows. To have no tax increase, um, that's been made very clear, but this can be accomplished short term by A, using available fund assets to balance the budget, or B, allocating investment or savings funds to balance the budget. While these two options work well in short term, they are not long-term solutions as these funding sources would eventually run dry over time if we continue to deplete them. That's the values that we're reading the ones to hear. Um, so that leads to the second goal, which is to minimize the use of reserves in order to balance the budget because we don't really want to run out of the reserves that we have. Um, third, we want to be good stewards of our financial resources and the best way to accomplish this is to look at what we want to undertake in the future and have a long-term plan on how to fund future projects. Uh, one way of where we are able to do this is to apply for grants whenever possible. Uh, we also have a five-year capital plan that better helps us determine what our future needs might be. Uh, the fourth goal is to enhance East Norton Township for residents and visitors and this can include infrastructure improvements, services, activities, and with public safety being an important goal. The, some of the 2025 highlights, just to let you know what has happened in 2025, we did a lot of work on the Stanbridge Street Park with the tennis courts, fitness trail exercise equipment, um, which we're in the process of doing that right now, and trail equipment, fire pit, pickleball courts. Uh, we have an expanded recreation program and trips. Um, we did upgrade the administrative office phone system. My graphics are a little slow. Um, the Germantown Pike Signal Improvement Project, we are still in the middle of that. Is correct, right?
Yes.
It's not yet complete, but that is a big undertaking. Uh, ongoing stormwater management improvements, vehicle replacement program, which is ongoing to keep our vehicles new and working, um, traffic control improvements. Our senior recreation highlights were Bingo Mathers Mondays, Senior Park Club, the Lecturer Series, Miki Matinees, Walking Club, and Bocce Ball. Uh, our other recreation highlights, Concerts in the Park, bus trips, Easter egg hunt, Community Day, Trick or Treat, Holiday Tree Lining, the Summer Count Program, and the youth basketball So, this is the scary part, the 2026 proposed budget summary. Um, we have 15 different funds that we'll be budgeting for in 2026. The general fund is the largest budgeted fund. This is the fund that pays for all the general purpose expenses, operational building expenses, wage and wage taxes, um, and some of the departmental budget requests. This is the one that just, you know, keeps the township running. Um, for the purpose of this budget presentation, the Capital Reserve Fund reflects potential grant funds within the revenues. So, those numbers probably look a little larger than you're used to seeing, but um, a lot of the capital project, projects that are proposed are being proposed with grant funds. So, unless we, if we don't get the grants, we won't be on the projects. Um, uh, these expenses reflect those noted in our five-year capital plan project. It also includes a lot of, um, quite a few of the 2025 budgeted items that were not accomplished this year, whether that was due to time constraints or funding restraints. Uh, the expense line also includes any new capital project, departmental request that department heads have proposed for 2026. Uh, you may also notice, notice the Highway 8 Fund has a very large expenditure budget compared to most years in the past. I would note that due to time constraints, the staff and management recognize that the implementation of the 2025 road program may not have been feasible to complete at the time they will weigh. So, it's to not disrupt the already congested roads due to other nearby road closures and it was determined that it was make more sense to roll the funds into the 2026 budget and undertake a larger 2026 program. So, the funds that are allocated here for the road program actually include funds that we had budgeted for 2025 and 2026. Um, as a result of discussions over the next month, we'll be working to reduce the expense side of this budget summary and determine which items are the top priorities. Um, the other thing you may notice is the Fiscal Recovery Fund is no longer in here and that's because all of the funds have to be expended by the end of this year. So, there's a midpoint, we should be there for next year. And we have very little in that account, I don't have the, the, but I know we have very little in there and it's just residual interest and we're not even required to report that to the federal comment. Um, if we don't use all of those, we can throw it into our capital fund. So, some of our 2026 budget highlights are again, the traffic control management, stormwater management, infrastructure investment, and road improvement program. We will also have some flood remediation projects, bridge repair projects, um, a few items for upgrading the administrative building, ongoing vehicle replacement, and a proposal to expand recreational activities. Some of the budget challenges are the rising cost for capital improvements and purchases. Over the past several years, for both purchases and services, they've increased somewhat substantially, which has made project planning somewhat difficult. There are limited development opportunities in these north and township, which result in decreased permit revenues and these make it a challenge to maintain the tax rate at where it is currently. Um, also, grant competition has increased, so sometimes it's just a little harder to get those grants. So, our next steps, I don't want to go too far. Our next steps will be, um, like I had mentioned previously, our department, Saturday meeting with our department heads, um, individual meetings with each board supervisor, our board members, I should say, um, and then in November, we'll review the budget again at the public meeting and then hopefully adopt on December 16th because we have to do it before December 31st. So, I would be happy to enter any, any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Just to add a little bit too, but I appreciate Cindy's first budget review. Very good, very thorough.
Thank you.
Um, we always look at this as our late October Halloween scary. And again, just as Cindy has said, this is our, which, there's many things on the wish list in here, we will go through it over the next month and really nail down, um, expenditures in a, in a much more fine-tuned way. Uh, our cameraman, who also is one of our leaders at our Public Works Department, as an example, each year he puts in requests for his own ice cream machine for Public Works. Um, yearly, we deny it, but that kind of stuff is, is in there and we will, it'd be funny if I was kidding about it, but you know.
Can't hurt it.
But these are the kind of things we're at now. It's really, um, you know, there's all these things you could purchase to make it a township better from equipment and everything, but we're very responsible in what we come to with at, as a final budget. We are, we understand the assignment. We're going to look under at every stone, um, and really damp down with the best, um, most reasonable budget we can do for the residents and at the same time, uh, we want to always keep services, if not expand. So, it's a balancing act that, that we have to do, but for the last 10 years, um, we have done a lot of that and we've been very successful and we hope to continue that success and we expect to bring to you by November and definitely much in December, be a balanced budget with no tax increase. So, there's a lot of work to do, um, but stay tuned, we're very confident we'll be able to bring that to you.
Well, I would say, this is, like I say, this is the whole wish list. Um, so, one of the things I talked about today is one of the things we want to look at is just to be sure that all of the things that we want are actually feasible to complete because this is, we didn't complete some of those for whatever the reasons might be. So, some of those are completed in the 2026. So, we want to make sure that whatever we have proposed, that it really is realistic that we can complete it.
I'll give you one bar of that in a minute ago. Um, part of what Cindy and I discussed was some of, so our Public Works, we are so fortunate. We, and I know I joke with our cameraman, uh, Public Works Leader, but we are so fortunate. Many townships have to go out and pay top dollar to contractors to do the work that we can enhance and save you 60, sometimes 70% on the cost of that project because of the talent we have here. Many of these projects that get pushed down are small, smaller projects where a, a older community, developed community, there are some neighborhood, very beautiful streets in this township that knowings. They were built when we put it in. So, the water just runs down like, like a river. We go in and we, we are stable, does these things and puts the pipes and puts the gas. So, we do that each year. So, there's always a ongoing list of smaller, 10, 15,000 dollar projects that will cost 50 if we went out to do them. So, you're going to see that year after year and it's, it's just sort of ripple effect. We get to, parcels are coming up to the mall, but it's a continual thing that you will see on every budget as long as we're here doing stuff.
And I was told we needed to keep it shorter than a day, so I go.
You did a good job.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have a few questions, if that's all right.
Sure.
And, um.
I hope I have answers.
Yeah, and if you don't, like again, this is the first step in the process, so it's totally okay if we discuss this at the next meeting or in kind of our one-on-one deep dive. Um, but a couple of the areas I did notice are increasing a lot from the prior year and he did explain the one, right, that like Highway 8 Fund, you know, is really a rollover effect. Unfortunately, I think we're still dealing with the same phenomenon around the township where I feel like every major road is being worked on at the same exact time for a.
It's going to get worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so yeah, I, I, you know, I'm interested in hearing more about that, but thank you for the initial explanation. The other, the other budgets that, that seem to go up substantially, you know, versus this point a year ago, right, um, were the Fire Protection Fund.
Uh huh.
Do you know what's driving that?
Um, a part of it is there was a request, that isn't significant, I do realize that. Part of it, there was a request for an additional employee. Um, and some of the, that employees wages do go, come out of that fund. Uh, some of it is, I did put a little bit of a buffer in some of these because it's easier to work all the way down because of the way the second class code is written, we can't go to a lot.
Okay.
So, I, I did put a little buffer in.
Yes, and I also recognize that you're brand new to our township.
Yes.
So, you don't, you don't know yet kind of where you can push versus can and, and to your point, and rather know everything that we think we want or need and then make a conscious decision about whether we can take on that risk or do without the ice cream machine.
That's not a good idea.
Yes, yes. Um, Capital Reserve Fund was the other one, um, that's up substantially, like $3,000. Um, what is, what is in, and I know, and a part of that is like our capital plan, our private capital is not like the same amount every year, right?
Right.
There's, there's some peaks and valleys.
Right, and a lot of that is, there, there were quite a few capital projects, um, that were grant dependent, that were in the 2025 budget, that, there's one very large grant that we're waiting for an answer to in November, but the work that would have been done in 2025, because we didn't have the grant, it now won't be done until 2026. And that's where I was saying that we really want to take a look at, and we'll know a little more in November, once we know if we see that grant or not, and then we'll know, we'll have a better idea what we can do and what not. And we did, there were a few small things added, like, um, just around the building. We've been looking at the windows, the windows here are really old and they're starting to get extremely cloudy, um, so we did put some money in there for new windows for the building before we start having issues with that.
Did we get that done this year? Well, and did, like, can we apply for the federal, um, energy efficiency tax credit that only lasts until end of year?
With this township, with this situation we have here, in the extent of, as you recall, over the last five or six years, we put the roof over, we redid the entire building, just about, there, the windows are the next obvious, uh, when you look out there, they look dirty. That's not dirty.
No.
It's very, it's very, trying to get it off, but, and then there's some structural issues, so it's something, we may not even, there's no guarantee it will be a 26 thing, but we're evaluating, that's why at this point, we're talking about the things, could be a 26 or 27, um, purchase, so.
And then we're also, we have, we have an upcoming meeting where we'll be talking about all of the existing grants that we have. So, some of the grants, um, that will be spending money, or some of the projects we're spending money on this year because it's so late in the year, we're not going to be receiving those grant funds, reimbursed grant money until next year. So, it's possible the revenue side that could actually be more because some of the work being done now, we don't receive until next year. So, yes, that is very high and I recognize that and again, a lot of that reasoning is because a lot of it is grant dependent. So, if we're not getting the grants, we're not having work.
I believe you said it earlier, but what's in the revenue column reflects grants that we will apply for or grants we have confirmed and will be awarded.
Both.
Okay. So, it's, it's a projection.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and the other one was the Investment Fund, which is up, I think around two and a half. Maybe you can educate us on like the difference between what goes into the Investment Fund versus the Capital Reserve Fund.
Well, the Investment Fund is a fund that was set up when the sewer, the sewer was removed, or sold, I'm sorry.
Okay. But it's, it's used to have the same, like, purpose, right?
Well, this, so what I did, this is really high, so I do know why this, because I, I did this.
Okay.
It's really high because that is basically what would be needed to put into the other funds to make this a balanced budget.
Okay.
It's.
So, that's very likely not going to happen because we're going to whittle those other expenditures down. This is kind of looking at a worse case than there is.
Okay. Did you have something else?
No, I didn't. Basically, it's the next rendition of the, the next rendition, people say a lot of, that's like on paper, but it won't come to you next time, it'll be a much different time.
Okay. Got it, understood. Um, yeah, and I'm, you know, even though I'm not new, right, like some of this is, uh, well, it's, it's new to some of us, right, or newer to some of us and, and we don't live it every day, so we tell them we remind them.
I do.
Yes.
I love it.
Thank goodness. Um, and then you mentioned that one of the, the headwinds this year is competition for grant funding, um, and we're all hearing about it in the news, right? Like, we don't have to state budget, it's still, you know, federal, um, uh, monies are being pulled back. Um, is there anything like we can do to make ourselves more competitive?
It's a good question, I think. Um, our, as, this is my impression, Pop, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think our engineering teams have done a lot of the grant applications because that, you know, they're, that's what they do. Um, is that correct?
Yes.
They've been involved with quite a bit of it.
And we are one of the very fortunate townships, um, who say, sue them grants. Um, our state representative, um, Matt Bradford and, uh, State Senator Manny Galway, um, our connections to East Norton have benefited us greatly and we appreciate that, so, um, we have been, we have been very fortunate and we hope that fortunate scenario continues, but it obviously will happen to this budget and that's what we started with and that really comes down to it, we would like a budget passed at some point, so.
And there are a lot of grants that were in some process up right now. You have forty few grants, so that is a really, that is helpful.
Okay.
I just don't know how long they're going to take.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Germantown Pike Signal Upgrade Change Order. I'd like to call in our consulting engineer to explain this.
Thank you, Sir.
Before we do that, we need to make a.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, no.
You got the rest.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to approve the budget, preliminary, preliminary?
I will put that in a form of motion to authorize the advertisement of this preliminary budget and the scheduling of the budget presentations for the next two months.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Davis, Vice Chairman Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, next item, I'll get some engineer.
Thank you, Supervisor Devin. Um, this item is related to the previously mentioned Germantown Pike Signal Upgrade, um, project. Uh, during the course of work, General Highway in Higgins, uh, discovered several underground conduits that are compromised and required repair. Uh, so I believe in your packets is a quote for $39,342 to replace those conduits by directional drilling, which would mean, uh, we don't need to trench the roadway, would not need to, um, impact traffic anymore than they already have. Um, the locations are also listed, um, Germantown Pike in Arch Road, Germantown Pike in Pot Shop, and then Germantown and Stanbridge. For the total cost as much for $39,342. Um, if you have any questions, uh, my best to, to answer, but.
Yeah, so those cables, would they like not let the light change when you have the intersection of say Germantown Pike to Pot Shop?
I, I don't know the exact condition of them. I know we had a traffic engineer come out and also look at them and he recommended replacement. Um, other than that, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, what, you mean more? Yeah, they, there's not even enough room to get through with the disc ball.
Okay.
So.
They have to redo the whole?
We're not even sure. Fortunately, they can, like, uh, like you said, we can, um, they can draw under the road because if we have any more traffic assumptions in this township.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want that.
You got people that'll just hunker down and not leave.
Yeah, and I'm seeing Higgins out there, they've been, uh, the last month, I guess it's been, they've got all the lights and it's good to.
My understanding they were roughly at 50% of.
Yeah, approximately, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and this is grant funded?
This is, this particular expense is not. The major project for the main hours, bigger plus is, as they went to install this, this is the thing they find and just get the 39 thousand.
This is the maintenance item, is it?
Yes, yes, so, we, Cindy's out.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make that form of motion, second.
Thank you, Supervisor Devin. Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Resolution number 2916, Rita for the East Norton Township. Resolution number 2916, Rita Furmanese, Martin Towne, emergency operation plan, I'd like to call on Chief of Police Matthew Brennan to review this item.
Thank you, Superintendent Mark, before you is the township's emergency operations plan that was updated, it is dated October of 2025, Pennsylvania's Emergency Management Services requires that the township maintain and keep a current emergency operations plan for prevention and minimization of major damage caused by major incidences and emergencies within the township, so this is a plan that has been approved in the past, but it has now been updated to best practices, and we request the board to reaffirm it via this resolution 2916.
Any questions for the chief?
And it has not only been reviewed by our police emergency management and our bar chief.
And also, wasn't it done by an intern, so we also saved money on it?
That's right, it was put together as organized by.
Thank you. Was anyone want to put that into a motion?
I'll put that in a form motion.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman, any second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Superintendent Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, our emergency operations.
Reaffirming the East Norton Township Notification and Resource Manual, NAR, I'd like to call on Chief of Police Matthew, Chief of Police Matthew Brennan to review this item.
So this is a companion document to the emergency operations plan that you just reaffirmed, in this document, or this manual, rather, there are tables which consist of critical infrastructure locations throughout the township, includes bodies of water, childcare, school locations, all of which that would be used in the case of a major emergency. This has also been updated up until October of 2025, and we request that you reaffirm the NAR as well.
Any questions? Anyone want to put that into the NAR motion?
I'll make that a form motion, second.
Thank you, Superintendent Devin, Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that, the NAR is also reaffirmed.
Resolution number 2917, 538 North Trooper Road Plan Approval, I'd like to call on our township engineer to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Kavas, this is related to the subdivision and land development at 538 North Trooper Road, they are, there's a resolution before you for preliminary plan approval, my understanding is all review comments in our letter are, will comply with the exception of the listed waivers, I also believe the applicant is here, if you have any additional questions, for me or for them?
I believe a lot of the waivers were pulled, we didn't need them.
Okay, other than the, are the listed ones?
Yeah, some of the stuff that was tied into the old subdivision, they're already approved, didn't have to be waived again, but, Chris, does it need more?
Most of them are landscaping, and they're more minor, you know, a lot of the state type of waivers, so that is, I know Chris, who is not here, it's a, she thought he took a vacation, which is nice, she, we had discussed it internally, and she recommended approval of all, because they were very minor, the ones that existed, a lot of them went away with this change, but they, the ones still being, that's where all landscaping, curving.
Yeah, but, excuse me, the landscaping, we weren't asking for all that, that was one thing the planning commission had, we had some issues with the trees, we did a tree count, all that, we wanted to meet what we have to, there were some other things, look landscaping, it's not that.
And there's, the bigger issue is, there's a replanting per caliber inch of some trees that were taken down, and that's what they're talking about, and that's all in agreement on, and that's the base issue with that, and Mr. Ebbins, I think he was agreeing to that.
And then I do want to reiterate, this is for preliminary approval, so he will have to come back for final, so this won't be on the top.
Have you seen the land?
I'm looking at it right now.
Because it's not really going to change, it'll tweak a little bit, but for the most part, it's, that's all we're doing. Social moving back.
Limited opportunities for development, but still.
Yeah, maybe some permits, we might pull some permits, I'm about to have a permit right now. New tax space.
While balancing the impact on the township with the traffic, natural market as well, thank you. Any other questions? Anyone want to put that into the formal motion?
I'll put that in a form motion.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman, any second?
I'll second.
And Superintendent Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution number 2918, affirming the appointment of Patricia Marks to the East Norton Township Board of Supervisors.
Uh.
Thank you, we'll call on Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Supervisor, this is just a formality, as you called last meeting, you're appointed as supervisor of art, you did it by motion, you did it by motion, when we look back on it, we get it done by resolution in the past, so tonight is just sort of affirmed to be the appointment, but by resolution, publicly, so there's a, I'm pretty sure it's just way down.
But Supervisor Mark could abstain?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you. Any questions? Okay, anyone want to make that?
I'll make the motion to affirm the appointment of Patricia Mark to the Board of Supervisors, second.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis and Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution number 2918 carries.
Affirming car camera purchase, I'd like to call on Chief of Police Matthew Brennan to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Mark, before you should be an Axon Enterprise contract or quote estimate associated with both body worn cameras and in-car camera system, last meeting, finance director talked about seizure of funds that came about in a collaboration with the DEA and the East Norton Police Department in conducting a joint investigation into an illicit pharmacy, there was a seizure of funds, these funds were disseminated, the East Norton Township received approximately $566,000 as a result of that seizure, all of those funds that have to be used for law enforcement purposes, we are asking that the board affirm the purchase of the in-car camera system, the total cost for the in-car camera system is $177,979.62, spread out over a period of five years, the remainder of that money that you see in that estimate is previously approved in 2024 for the body worn camera, which is also Axon, that is the remainder of that money, that is also spread out, was spread over a period of five years, but the contract is being extended, so that both now the in-car camera system and the body camera system are both going to be running concurrently, rather than having them be separate, we received a reduction of approximately $14,000 in savings as a result of combining what we already had, which was the body worn camera, and now the request for the in-car camera system, so we did receive a discount as a result of that, so I am asking to, if the board will affirm the purchase of the in-car camera system using the asset fund from that operation. We had a plan to come to in 2026 for this purchase as part of the budget, we were very fortunate to receive these forfeiture funds, so it really puts us ahead of the, into the game for this purchase.
And we still have some bounds there, too.
We do, and just as a credit to the chief and his team, they had, we've had two years of body cameras that are a part of this, and we haven't had to pay anything, because he went out and received grants, applied and received grants towards this, so we have really been ahead of the game when it comes to the body cameras, and we're going to continue that effort with the in-car cameras as well.
If I could just interject, that that request has been entered into the capital part of the 2026 budget, so it is already accounted for, should be approved.
And so it's like a five-year payment, what's the useful life of these systems?
Well, the one we currently have is 12 years, but with technology, we're using an in-house server, and we're using DVDs and CDs, which they don't even, I know, we're looking, we're replacing the in-car camera system, because it is antiquated, it is approximately 12 years old, and it's a different manufacturer than Axon, which now our district attorney's office has accepted, and we're all on board, so there's an efficiency benefit to this, and a reduced cost of these, these discs and such that we can't even, you know, yes, indeed.
So the goal is 10 years, that would be our goal.
Yeah. Any other questions? Would anyone like to move to affirm the camera purchase, in-car camera purchase?
I'll put that in a form motion.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Superintendent McDavid, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Authorization to sell, decommissioning of this equipment, once again, I went whole with Chief Brennan to review this, I promise it's my last one, thank you, Vice President Coleman. We previously got approval from the board to sell one of our light bars, it did not sell, we have a second light bar now, we're asking permission so that we can bundle the two, and give it another shot on municipal bid, and think somebody who may be in the market for two rather than one, and we're requesting permission to give it a shot, put it on municipal bid and see if we can, we can sell it.
Any questions? Anyone want to move to authorize that sale?
I'll put that in a form motion.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman, any second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, it's time to pay the bills, I'll call on our Director of Finance, Assistant King, to review the expenses.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis, so the monthly expenditures from September 30th through October 27th, for accounts payable were $917,833.91, payroll $493,967.23, police asset forfeiture expense $3,858.95, and I would note that was for some Dell computers, and a total of $1,415,660.9, and I will note, the accounts payable amount does look extremely high, some of our projects, you know, bills are coming in this time of year, but that also would have included the payments that we leave to transfer the, to run the, yes, the pension, state pension through our books, so that was over $500,000 alone, so if you just were to take that out, that puts us back in the normal level.
Thank you. Any questions? Would you want to move to approve the monthly expenditures?
I'll make the motion to approve the monthly expenditures for only $415,660.9.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis and Coleman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And this is the end of our agenda, and the manager tells you.
Sure, just a couple things, Chair, we're hearing a lot of buzz about the new tractor supply, we've had several people in today talking about, talking about it, I guess, you know, they suffer with tractors clearly, seems to be a very popular place, I know our newest supervisor visited over the weekend.
He spent an hour and a half there.
She's already very popular, which is, which is interesting, but I hear it's an all round score, and there's a lot of cool stuff there, also getting a lot of feedback from the Monster Golf over by Voice, which is already taking off and so many birthday parties and such, heard a lot of it at our trunk or tree, which was, if you weren't there, it was scary, because the people kept coming, and it was, I say that in jest, but it was a, as you know, extremely successful, we don't want it to be any more successful, I don't think there's no candy, but it was, it was a really wonderful event, and going forward, we're looking forward to the tree lighting, well, a lot of information we can announce soon, there's a lot of changes coming up this year, our tree lighting, that's the last of the year, as Supervisor Coleman said, but it's growing as well, so stay tuned for that, and we look forward to the holiday season coming up and doing some good things, so, thank you.
Definitely a point of pride that we have, like, the coolest things going on in the area.
Well, I will say this, and this is, and no offense to the lower properties, but they canceled their trunk or trees for lack of interest, we had some interest, just saying.
Can you provide an update on, because you referenced earlier, like, the traffic, the railroad repairs?
Yes, I, I think, Chief, do you mind doing that, because I know you've got the exact dates?
Oh, my goodness.
I thought that, I actually have them marked up.
November 2nd is Germantown Pike.
Yeah, November 2nd is Germantown Pike, currently working on township line road, they are, they are marked out for seven days, but they have been averaging five days to get it done, so there is a chance they could be done early, and again, the township, the police department of the township did request to see if they would hold off, when doing the Germantown Pike one, they said that the repair, that their conditions of that particular crossing was extremely poor, and that they did take time to discuss our request, but that they are moving forward with indeed the repair of Germantown Pike for that. The other project that we recently talked about, Bob and I and a couple of our members of our team were on with Pendot and the engineers for the Germantown Pike and Decal, they are on schedule for where they, they are currently, so they're still looking for 2027, end of the summer for 2027 to have that done, there was one gleam of hope, where they said that in the winter, they're not going to be doing a certain amount of work, and they may be able to open up entirely for a short period of time during the winter, until the weather, the spring warms up, and then they will move back down again to a, to reduce, reduction in lanes there, so that's the update that we have currently, and what we've learned dealing with Pendot is, what they say may happen or may not, and they may not tell us about it, so, according, but we're hoping for the best, thank you.
Yeah, does that, you referenced Decal, does that include everything down to East Johnson Highway, and then also that piece of township line they keep closing?
Well, it, yes, that is all the same project, so it is entirely the same project, so the crew that you may see not working at Johnson, may be up at township line road and Decal, is how it was explained to me, so that is the same crew that is doing all the construction there, but in terms of the opening, specifically, that is the Germantown and Decal intersection, where he said he is, hope keeping the fingers crossed and hoping that he'll be able to, for the, for the winter, when they're, when they're construction, they can't do certain, certain actions as a result of the temperatures.
And, and we said last time, it just makes sense, but it's probably going to be second for probably a minimum of four days, you, Germantown Pike will be absolutely closed.
It's not the first time they've done that, but you will not be able, plus, anytime of day, 24/7.
So, you better be on East Johnson Highway, or, you know, or township line before nine o'clock, because I think I think that's when they shut down, yeah.
Shut down at nine o'clock or whatever.
24/7.
24/7. Yeah, I'm just, I'm observing that they tend to close that section of township line between Decal and.
Yeah, you're talking about the old, yeah.
Oh, yeah, or Sweden and Cal, yeah.
Yeah, they keep doing like one way, and.
Or it's shut down, you gotta go.
You never know.
You never, yeah, but I, but I think I've just heard the pass, that it can get there before, you pass through before nine o'clock here, okay, but I'm sure with Germantown, it will be shut down, it'll be a lot of traffic.
And as we said, talked about last weekend, we have, we discussed it with police, fire services, ambulances, how was it going to deal with getting cut off from the hospital, we, we have an easier time from policing and a fire than the ambulances do, quite frankly, because they can be rushing truly in an emergency, so I know Chief and Chief and everybody else included has worked on it, and we're ready as best as we can be, but the ambulances is something we don't have a lot of control over, and that's going to be a challenge.
Yeah, because one of the problems is some of the ambulances are actually covered Yeah, because one of the problems is some of the ambulances are actually coming as far as track, or they're coming up from whitewash, and upper marketing, so, you know, there, there are going to run into problems trying to.
As long as it's on that side of the railroad tracks, so like, track should be.
It should be fine, but.
As long as you're not sending people down.
We do when you have Plymouth and whitewash, they're on the other side.
Yeah, and suburban is no longer providing emergency services, like, there's no hospital.
I think they, I think they had two beds.
Just not helping.
Last week, they had two beds or something, they're not really hospital.
Yeah, I was in there last Friday, and it was, there was nothing in there at all.
It's great, but like, I mean, if you walk into suburban right now, you think you're in a hurry.
Oh, you said we're in, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
I feel like I am, honestly. I'm in a hurry.
We'll get, we'll get through it, but we're prepared, we can take it, that's, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Hart? Thank you. Vice President Coleman?
Vice President Coleman for upcoming meetings. Tuesday, November 18th, 7:00 PM, Zone Heritage, Wednesday, November 19th, 7:00 PM, Land and Commission Meeting, that's also my birthday. Thursday, November 20th, 7:00 PM, Human Relations Committee Meeting. Monday, November 24th, 6:30 PM, Historical Advisory Committee, and Tuesday, November 25th, 7:00 PM, Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. Upcoming events, Monday, November 3rd, bingo, please, please, please register. Tuesday, November 11th, Veterans Day, thank you for your service, our offices are closed. Saturday, November 15th, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, our Holiday Craft Fair. Monday, November 17th, 11:00 AM, bingo, once again, please register. Wednesday, November 19th, my birthday, 10 to 11:30 AM, our Car Club, please register. And Thursday, November 20th, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, Movie Matinee, don't know what the movie is, but please register. That's it.
We all now have, November 19th. And I, and I want to thank, again, the Portionate Nation, you know, the entire Township staff for bringing yet another new activity, and I would thank our new supervisor for reminding us to add it to the list of upcoming events at the Holiday Craft Fair on November 15th. Citizens be heard. All right, thank you for joining us and listening, and thanks to everyone for being here, looking forward to our next budget presentation. With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll put that in form of motion.
Thank you, Vice President Coleman, thank you, Superintendent Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any good?